Let me know when we're recording.
All right. Hey, folks, it is that time again, so I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. We will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan's one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk will call the roll. Supervisor Lawford is present. Supervisor Breslin is here. Supervisor Headland is here. Supervisor Score is here. Supervisor Steen is here. Supervisor Shackleton is present. Supervisor Gary Bjork is here. Supervisor Wilson is excused. Supervisor Quinn is here. Supervisor Jetson is here. Supervisor Bashan is here. Supervisor Kinnear is here. Supervisor Barrier is here. Supervisor Welsh is here. Supervisor Lyon is here. Supervisor Vogel is here. Supervisor Story is here. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Burnt is excused. Supervisor Morehouse is here. Supervisor Hagan is attending. Supervisor Thomas is present. Supervisor Prochnow is here. Supervisor Gilbert was online. We'll see. Supervisor Larry Bjork is here. Supervisor Bauer is here. Supervisor Wolf is here. Supervisor Hartung is here. And Chair McCullough is here. And Supervisor Vandermeulen has just joined us. Perfect. Next up, approval of the minutes. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Wolf seconds. Any speaking to the minutes? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. So we often take the time to memorialize someone when they have retired. We have Janelle Newcombe, who has just completed 45 years of service and is still going strong, so we would like to congratulate her and thank her. A public comment? I don't have any. Doesn't look like it. Do you have anything? All right, appointments. You have the appointments in front of you. Dunn County Safety Committee is the chairs. I would need a motion in a second for the zoning board of adjustments. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Any questions about the appointments? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Point passes. I'm going to, without objection, we have some 4H folks here for the extension report, and so if nobody objects, I'm going to move the extension forward so that those folks can get on their way this evening. All right, come on up. Well, that was the initial plan, and then I had a discussion about what the county manager's report looked like, and I thought I would save you some more time.
My family really appreciates that, so thank you. I'm a little, yeah. So good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Kristin Bruder. I'm the area director, and I served Dunn County as well as Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, so it's really good to be with you tonight to give you our report. So if you know extension, and Andrew just yelled at me, you know we're passionate about our work, so we could easily go a couple of hours. So I have decided that, to limit that, I have a video to show you, and that will get us started. This video will introduce you to the amazing extension staff that you have here, serving Dunn County, and highlight some of their program areas that your investment supports. So Andrew, if you wouldn't mind starting that?
Dunn County is a special place, and the extension department is here to help people learn, grow, and work together. We provide education, resources, and hands-on support in areas like farming, youth programs, gardening, health, and parent education. No matter the need, we're here to help communities thrive.
As the Dunn County 4H and Youth Development Educator, I'm dedicated to creating an inclusive environment where all youth can lead, learn, and grow. We achieve this by using a research-based model to deliver hands-on programming for 4H members and other young people throughout the county. Our ultimate goal is to help shape the next generation of civic-minded citizens and community leaders.
4H projects provide opportunities for personal growth for our youth in a safe environment.
I help community leaders solve local problems. I work with them on issues like ambulance service and feeling like they belong in their community. I guide groups to understand what's really causing these problems. My job is to help communities work together to solve their biggest challenges.
Gardening connects people, improves quality of life, and plays a vital role in creating shared green space and supporting communities.
The Crops and Soils Program consists of educational events, information, and local on-farm research to address emerging issues, improve farm profitability, and protect valuable and soil-water resources.
Our livestock program provides farmers timely resources and research-based information spanning from the conception to the consumption of livestock animals.
Families are the bedrock of society. When families are strong, our communities are strong. As Dunn County's family educator, I'm happy to support families, agencies, and nonprofits with the resources, classes, and programs that they know they can trust.
Food Wise helps people learn how to eat healthy on a budget and stay active, making good food choices easier for everyone.
Join us in our mission to enhance the lives of Dunn County residents. Together, we can achieve more.
If I would have brought them all, we would be here for a couple of hours, so this was really good to keep them short and sweet. So as you just saw, extension touches many parts of our community, and that's from youth development to agriculture, from food access to community well-being. So I want to leave you tonight with three key points before I hand it off to our 4H folks. First, extension is an incredible value. We operate under a co-funded model. Your county investment is matched by state and federal dollars. That means your local support stretches further, bringing in high-quality education and services at a fraction of the cost. It's a high return on investment with direct community impact. Second, extension is responsive. We don't bring a one-size-fits-all program to your community. We listen to your local priorities and bring research-based solutions tailored to your needs. Our educators live and work in the communities they serve, and they are deeply connected to the people and partners who drive change. Third, we build capacity. Extension doesn't just provide services. We develop leaders, connect networks, and equip people with the tools to create lasting change in their own communities. That's how we create a ripple effect that goes far beyond a single workshop or program. So next, you're going to hear from one of our outstanding 4H families. Their story is a powerful reminder of what happens when young people are supported, challenged, and given leadership opportunities. They are the future of our communities and one of the best examples of extension's long-term impacts. So thank you for your continued support of extension. We are proud to be your partner, and we are always here to help. If you see a need, you have a question, or you see an opportunity in your district, please, please contact us. So Zach, I'm going to have you come on up with our 4H family, and Zach will introduce the 4H family, and I can take any questions about extension or our report at the conclusion. So thank you.
Well, hello, everybody. Thank you for having us here today. As she said, I'm Zach. I'm the 4H educator. If you've noticed, I have the same shirt on as I did in the video. I always do that. I don't know why. But anyways, that's besides the point. I just wanted to quickly introduce the Bushendorf family here. They're going to talk about their experiences in 4H and how it's helped them grow as humans.
Hi, I'm Isaiah. I'm from the Cedarlings 4H Club of Dunn County 4H. Here are some of the things I like about 4H. One of the things I like about 4H is every spring, we get to go to the Evergreen Cemetery to clean up gravestones and rake leaves and make the cemetery just, yeah. Another thing I love is making our 4H sign every year, which we paint on different designs for the themes of Dunn County Fair. So like Star Stripes and Summer Nights is this year, so we did Stars and Stripes on our sign, so that was fun. I love the fair because I make a lot of friends, and we get to play a lot of games like volleyball explosion and, yeah, just capture the flag and, yeah, so. I want to, I want to do Space Camp in the future through 4H because I've always wanted to do Space Camp, and 4H will give me that opportunity when I'm old enough. Thank you for having me on the board meeting and.
My name is Lily Bushendorf, and I'm also from the Cedarlings 4H Club. What I love about 4H is the community service I get to do. I get to make Valentine's cards for nursing homes around Dunn County. I also made cat toys for the Humane Society. I also love Outpost Camp. This year, we got to, we got a presentation for a beekeeper and also fly fishing and a DNR presentation as well, and that was very interesting. I really enjoyed that. I really like the group games we get to play, but they're not too big, so I get to know so many different people. I love the fair, getting to display my projects, and I am in Youth Activities Council, so that has helped me be a better leader. I went to Battle of the Clubs this year and got to lead an activity for that. A couple of years ago, I went to Art University and made earrings and some sculptures and a watercolor painting. In the future, I would like to go on some historical trips and also help younger children. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for having us. I just am super proud to be able to share these two wonderful people with you. This has been a really great thing for our family. Some of the things that I really hoped and prayed that my children would get to do is to be an active part of their community, and I, as a youth, was not an active part of my community, and that was something that 4H has given us. We started 4H actually during COVID, so we were online, and I had never been an active person in 4H, and so it was one of those opportunities that brought us in. So it was art projects, it was making jam, it was amazing. And then a family, after COVID, said, "You need to come join an actual 4H club," and I thought, "We don't farm, so that doesn't seem like the right fit." But they're like, "No, no, no, no. 4H is so much more than that," and it definitely is. It is about community, it is about friendships, it's about learning. That's another huge thing that we value in our family is education, and 4H has educated our kids in so many ways. And then the other thing that they have mentioned is leadership. Being an active part and getting to chance to lead fellow kids at different ages, seeing them grow over the last five years with this program has been something that, as a mom, I can't thank you enough for. So the funds that you give 4H really do make an impact, not only to our family but other families, so thank you for that. And Andrew, I'll try to keep it short, too.
You're doing great.
But yes, anything that I love, there's so many things that I could say, and as we mentioned with the extension, I could be up here for hours, but just the opportunities that our children have had through 4H has opened so many more doors for them, them coming here, them knowing what a county board is, is super important, and if they can pass that information on to their friends and family, that is what my hope and dream is. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So that's one example of one of the 4H, or one of the programs in extension. So thank you for your time. Is there any questions for me?
Supervisor Morehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it's not for 2024, but could you comment on the status of Food Wise? Yes, yes. Oh, you're going to just shift me to a very emotional topic. So yes, Food Wise is one of our programs, so part of the, and they're part of the SNAP program. They're federally funded through the SNAP funding. So part of the federal budget reconciliation process through the House of Representatives was to eliminate SNAP, and that would include SNAP Ed. SNAP Ed is, Food Wise administers the SNAP Ed program. It is the education arm of the SNAP program. And so UW Madison Extension administers that through the Food Wise program. You saw Sandy as the Food Wise coordinator. The Senate last week did also propose to cut the SNAP program, so we are pretty certain at this point that that program will be eliminated. There still is a chance that there'll be a reversal. We were disheartened last week at that vote. So that would mean by June 30th, our SNAP, our SNAP Ed colleagues across the state, that program will end on the 30th, so that does affect all of our staff across the state. There's about 135 SNAP or Food Wise educators and coordinators across the state. But more importantly, that's also a loss of the programming that our vulnerable populations are receiving, the education piece of the SNAP funding. They're also eliminating the SNAP 80%, 70% to 80% of the SNAP funding over the next 10 years. So that programming that promotes health and nutrition to the SNAP Ed community, the SNAP community, will be eliminated as of June 30th under this bill.
Supervisor Bashant.
Do you have a report or any information you could share about the direct impact Food Wise has had here in Dunn County?
I do. I have a couple of impact reports that I can share through Andrew, and also happy to have Sandy come through, come at some point, if you wish, to also give a report to the board on the activities of the SNAP program, but I do have some impact reports that I can share with the board. And I can hand those to you, Andrew. Okay, thank you.
That looks like it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
And thank you, and you're welcome to stay and observe the meeting, or if you want to scamper off and do something else, now's the time. All right, now back to our normal order of events. Reporter of the county manager, Dan.
Multitasking. Yeah, so reporter of the county manager. I guess I'll start off to say that I am not the county manager, but she is online. So Chris was off on leave and is hard at work watching our meeting tonight. So first thing, items over $40,000. There's one item over $40,000. That is the, it's the labor part of our Verkata contract, so that was cameras and security system in the county. So we purchased all of the equipment early on, but we didn't pay for the labor until they were done, and that happened just this year. So that's the one item over 40. Any questions on that, I guess? So the next thing that I wanted to talk about was the, and it'll come up later as part of the CIP, but just to get everybody up to speed on changes that have happened since the last board meeting, let the last board meeting, I gave you an update on the geothermal solar project and that we had postponed that and, or, well, we had not signed that contract and that we were going to be looking into things. So I have a little summary here. Multitasking is failing. All right. So just to remind you, so the 2024 CIP included about $11 million to do solar and geothermal for the Judicial Center, the Government Center, and the neighbors of Dunn County, as well as a geothermal system that would replace the HVAC system in the Judicial Center. The intent around that plan was that the energy savings as part of that would pay for the debt service, resulting in no increase to property taxes. In addition to that, there would be a $2.5 million energy incentive from the federal government, to which we understand is currently still available. And then all of that energy savings would be guaranteed as part of our contract with Verge. So this is when we originally approved that, that was the assumptions that we had worked under. So in 2025, so just a couple of months ago, as that contract came available or came to us, we realized it was going to be about $10.5 million, and the solar was only going to cover the Judicial Center, so it wasn't going to cover the Government Center and the neighbors of Dunn County, which we originally assumed. The geothermal replacement was also going to include replacing all of the pipings in the building, so, long story short, that's kind of what happened to the solar as the cost increased to replace the pipings, which is something that they were not expecting. They had to cut costs somewhere else in order to kind of stay at our $11 million level. That particular change made it that there wasn't enough energy savings available to pay for this, for the project, and so it would have impacted property taxes. So that's primarily the reason why we didn't sign that contract, as we had proposed it and as you agreed to it. We told you it wouldn't increase property taxes, and with the knowledge that it would, it wasn't something that we wanted to move forward in a bait-and-switch type way. So that being said, what happened after that, so that's kind of a recap up to the last board meeting. So what's happened after that last meeting, the facilities committee met to update the CIP. So we knew that replacing the HVAC system was essentially a necessity in the Judicial Center. It's getting very old, so the committee met to update the CIP. And one of the questions that was brought to them is, "Do you want to replace this with a traditional system or a geothermal system?" So as we go to bid a project, it's hard to say, "Well, one or the other," because what we knew is a traditional system costs less than a geothermal system, but the long-term costs of a geothermal system could be less. So the facilities committee then chose to move forward with a geothermal system, which has higher upfront costs and a lower total cost of ownership. So I wanted to kind of go over what that looks like, and you all have a handout with a little peach and blue form that has a whole bunch of numbers on it that are so small you can't read them. But so that's a real breakdown of the numbers that I have here are kind of the totals from that, from that form, but that shows you a full breakdown, and so that information is directly from the contract, the Verge contract that we had, that kind of goes over what the total cost of ownership of the two systems are. So in the document that you have, you can see the blue is a traditional system and the peach is geothermal, correct? Somebody tell me if I'm wrong. Yeah, so what we look at is, and I had to kind of make an estimate here on the piping costs of about $2 million, but what we know is we look at the pricing of the solar for Judicial Center is about $1 million. So when you take away the neighbors and you take away the Government Center, you kind of run around that $2 million. So that $2 million is an estimate, but that leaves us with the total cost to replace those systems at about $7.2 million or $6.6 million, depending on the two systems, right? And then we have $2 million in piping. So what I can tell you about the piping is, it's always water pipes, copper water pipes, that can go bad over time. But I think the main reason that the company had proposed to replace the piping had to do with the logistics of switching from one system to another. So you could take out all of the piping. If you take out all the piping, you lose all of your HVAC in that building until you put in the new stuff. So their intent was to put in a parallel set of pipes so that then they could kind of switch things over with minimal impact to the inhabitants of the Judicial Center. So both our workers plus the people who are visiting us in the jail. So that's an item that I think is somewhat of an optional one. It comes down to a decision about how we want to manage that, and I think the timing of when that system gets replaced also kind of factors into that. This week, you would not want to go without HVAC, but you know, maybe last week you could have. So the next item down is the 20-year parts replacement. So like any other system, there's moving parts in it that need to be replaced over time, and this is one of the big advantages of a geothermal system is there's a lot less parts. We're using, we're not, there's not a big heating element. We're taking the, using the ground as our heat and cooling source to be able to do that, so you can see a significant difference in the 20-year cost of replacing all of those parts. And then the next item down is the preventative maintenance, and this once again comes down to the number of moving components there that need to be changed, fixed, you know, replacing filters, whatever it is. That's, as we talk about preventative maintenance, that's the work that happens there. The next one is the projected utility cost, so I did kind of highlight over in the green there. That's a $3 million difference in the total energy cost between the two systems. So that is the amount of money that we would pay to the electric or gas provider. That's kind of that difference right there. And then you look at the energy incentive, which is another $2.5 million, which, you know, it's a, that's kind of an unknown, but as it is, that's out there. So when you put that down, you kind of add those up, and you look at that cost of those two systems over 20 years, that geothermal system, as you can see, comes in at about half of the cost of a traditional system. So that's some of the justification in the math that Supervisor Prochnow did in his head in the middle of the meeting. But that's some of the justification around why would we go down this path that costs a little bit more upfront, and it comes down to what is that total cost as, over the 20 years that we're going to have to deal with this? And in addition to that, and I didn't include those there, but there are some benefits that this building and the neighbors of Dunn County are geothermal. So our staff that are maintaining these systems, it's like systems, so it's easier for them to be able to train in new people or to understand how all of these different components are working together. So there's advantages there. I can't put a number figure on that, but there truly is some value in that. So the cost estimates. So as you can see, I provided that information from the Verge contract, so that's kind of where that $9.24 million comes from. What we know about that is that included the piping costs, and that is not a competitively bid price, so that is a company that was going to guarantee some of that energy savings. So they were going to build a system that was going to be very good and efficient, which you want, but it may cost a little bit more, so there's a little bit of work that can happen if you were to competitively bid a project. As we look online and you say, "How much does it cost to replace an HVAC system?" You're going to find, with geothermal, you're going to find somewhere around, you know, $50 to $60 per square feet. So the Judicial Center is, the math here is based on 100,000 square feet. It's actually like 93,700 or something like that, so it comes out to about $6 million. Once again, that's, that number's not including pipes, so that's, once again, just based on an estimate that you can get if you Google. And then finally, the last one, as I did speak with some people that I know around that work in the facilities industry to say, "Hey, do you have a way to estimate how much these tools are?" And so some of them did have spreadsheets available that we could use in order to do that, and that number did come out to right around that same $7 million without piping that we saw in the Verge quote. So we do kind of feel like those numbers are out there. They're in alignment with what we would expect the market to be. But like anything in a budget, especially like something like this, we're going to build some contingency into the budget. That doesn't mean we're going to spend the whole amount, but we're not going to ask for you to pass a budget for $7 million, and all of a sudden, we need another $100, and we have to bring it back through that process. So we're going to build in a little bit of contingency in that request, so that's where that $9.5 million that's in the CIP, that comes to just a little bit of padding on top of that Verge contract. We truly do believe that that is on the high end of what we would get, but that's why we're budgeting at that high end. So and then I also just want to kind of point out that the Judicial Center is a very complex building. Uh, it is a jail. Uh, so that has its own uh, issues with it. We don't need Andy Dufresne sneaking through the uh, ventilation ducts in order to get out of there. So a lot of getting in and out of the nooks and crannies of a jail does not make for an easy project. Um, there's heated garages that that provide access to the jail and other areas within the uh, sheriff's department, and that building has over 200 rooms in it. Um, and I kind of put in there, so each room in a building like that typically has a vent and a return. And I have pictures of them from office upstairs, but you can see them. So these are the vents and the returns. Got to be around here somewhere, uh, down on the end. Um, so when you think of that, every single room has two pipes coming into it with a ductwork that goes through there. So there's a big mess in the in the top of a in the drop ceiling of these types of buildings. So when you talk about like a wide open gymnasium, it's a much simpler uh, HVAC system than a building that has multiple little rooms that requires a lot of control, especially and then you look at the zones. And um, the way this building is set up, um, one off between every two or three offices, there's one thermostat. So one person got the good office that gets to set how hot or cold the other ones are. And um, and if the sun beats in that one office, the other two get chilled out. So, um, so it's kind of fun, but that's uh, that's kind of how those all work out. And that's that's normal of these types of office buildings, but they are a very complex uh, setup. And that's kind of where a lot of that additional cost comes from. So the next thing that happened, so after the facilities committee had updated their CIP, we we went to the highway committee last uh, week in order to kind of talk through that. So if you remember through the capital improvement um, workshop that we had done, we had kind of talked about moving forward with that highway building in 2027. Uh, with the change to the HVAC system and doing an HVAC system in 2026, if we were to maintain that same schedule for the highway building, we would be getting into the point where we would have to impact property taxes. So we kind of brought that question to the highway committee and uh, staff made a recommendation to delay the uh, highway building and to kind of evaluate maybe some different options in order to find the best time that would work with our borrowing schedule. Um, the highway committee then did uh, approve to change their CIP. They moved the buildings, the building up one year to 2028, which kind of takes it off of that 2026 design. So there's, if you remember, there's about $700,000 for design in 2026. That's been moved to 2027. So, um, whether that is the right date long term isn't known, but that's part of that that five year CIP. That's where it's slotted at this point. It may move in the future as we as we do update the CIP on an annual basis. But that's where it has fallen right now. So that is, and though we are where we are today. So uh, changes to the CIP would be including that 9.5 million dollars in 2026. And then having that highway building move to 2028 with the $700,000 of design in 27. So.
See, there's questions.
Okay, Supervisor Story, then Supervisor Shackleton.
Yes, I'm just wondering with the police department potentially building nearby, uh, what are we going to do with that space or how will that impact this plan?
We have had no discussions with the city of Menominee about building of the police department. Uh, so I don't have really any answers as it relates to that. Um, I don't know where their plans are.
Do we get revenue from them now for them being in their building?
We do. We don't don't rely on this number wholly, but I believe it's like 120 some thousand dollars a year in rent that we receive from them uh, using the judicial center.
And then if there was geothermal, then there might be some discussions maybe with them building nearby, wanting to maybe utilize that somehow, that maybe some discussions in doing something there. I mean, I apparently that hasn't been talked about yet, but that's certainly out there to be. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Shackleton. So is this like, you know, when they would plan to do this, would it be yet this year or next year?
The HVAC?
Yeah.
It would be next year, so we would have to go through a bid process and and we would try and try and do that as early as we can so that we can maybe pick our own time slot.
Okay, so do you know how many bids they're planning on getting?
Uh, so it would be, we would follow the Wisconsin statute for a public works project. So it's a blind uh, bid where we would put it out there with the design and uh, we get what we get.
But you could, I mean, can you specify that you want it done in September, October, or April, May like that? I mean, I grew up without AC, haven't had AC except for the past few years. And I feel like we could probably get by with that for a couple of months.
I I too grew up without it and that was my first thought is I feel like we can, for $2 million, I feel like we can make it for a month.
Yeah.
So.
As long as it's the right month.
So.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're if we're planning that far ahead and we can specify, I guess I would be very inclined to. Cause I'm really having troubles wrapping my head around 9 million when we're looking at building a highway shop for 11.
Yep.
Just for an HVAC. And I understand the complexity. I get that. I'm just saying. If we can cut that any way we can, that would be phenomenal.
Yep. Yep. And it, you know, that was the Verge bulletproof, all the bells and whistles estimate. And it may well be that when we do a competitive bidding process, it will be, I wouldn't expect it to be enormously less than that, but it it may shave a a few hundred thousand or a million dollars off of it, which would be great. Uh, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Chairman, um, my questions revolve around the bidding process. And uh, being a member of the facilities committee, I really thought that we would have more uh, nailed down numbers to make a decision. Uh, I'm not speaking against geothermal. I'm just saying to make a decision between traditional and geothermal, I thought that we would have a more exact number uh, uh, for um, the conventional. And what I what I would, when I asked the question before, I get the answer that, well, if a company came in and then gave us a bid to do the job, then they would not be eligible to do the job. Am I correct there? Or where where's that heading to?
That's that's typically true that people can eliminate themselves because they have additional knowledge, insider information that that the bidding process isn't fair if they are included.
Well, what's fair to Dunn County taxpayers? If we don't know what the companies that are going to build uh, or rebuild the system, what it's going to cost and that we just go to the computer and figure out what it costs per square foot and figure out how many square foot it is. I mean, uh, I'm not arguing for or against anything. The procedure just bothers me that you make a decision on going one way or the other. We're not having rock solid numbers on what it's going to cost. And then the other thing is, uh, everyone's real hesitant when they talk about the um, two or three million dollars from the government uh, for doing geothermal. And uh, as this is moved down the the road, shouldn't we know for a fact if that funds are going to be available to us or not? Instead of just hoping it would be, would we have to go through a CIP or a budget?
So.
Having to know if those dollars are coming?
So I I can address a little bit of that and Dan can correct me where I'm wrong or leap in and add details. But in terms of the rock solid numbers, we are we are bound by state law in how we bid projects. And so as much as I would love to have those numbers, we don't have a good way of doing that without the person giving us those numbers, eliminating themselves from the possible bidding, simply because the way state law works. So yes, I would love, I would love the answer to that be, yes, we can figure this out. But we more or less can't do it without violating state law. And we are a creature of the state. We do what the state tells us to. Um, and then secondarily, the federal numbers, that's going to be dependent on the federal budget. So if the federal budget passes and they eliminate those, then we'll know for sure we don't have them. If the federal budget budget passes and they don't eliminate them, then we have a really good chance. It's just, there are things that we cannot know before the feds make their decisions.
Yep. And and I think part of that is is we include that 9.5 million dollars and do not take away that 2.5 because we don't know. So we're planning that we won't get it. Um, also, if we get it, we won't get it until 2027 because your system has to be fully available and it's part of your the the county, which doesn't normally file a tax return, would file a tax return in order to get that that reimbursement back. And so that would be, you know, April 15th of 2027 that we would um, turn in that paperwork to get it back and hopefully get it back in sometime in 2027.
Yeah. And and I will note that even if you look at the worst case scenario for the numbers we have, the 20 year time savings is still on the order of, I mean, if if it's best case, we're we're costing half what the traditional was. If we're worst case, we're still saving $8 million. Okay, Supervisor Hagan.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm just trying to get the timeline um, in my head with the new adjusted dates. Could you remind me when the return on the Elk Creek Solar is supposed to come online within all this? Is it like 2030, 2028?
Well, when they originally proposed it, it would have been like 2024. Um, so, uh, um, we we don't know. They it isn't until they are fully creating power that that would happen. So as it is right now, they haven't even broken ground. So best case scenario would be 28. Um, but and and that's the Elk Creek, not the Muddy Creek, Muddy Creek. Yeah, likely, maybe the same time, but but likely later.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I understand the procedure we're going to go through here. Um, so if, let's say we choose one or the other, A or B. Okay, so we choose B. We put it out for the through the state bid process and the numbers come back way wacky compared to what we're looking at now. Does our decision tonight marry us to having to do that project? I didn't think so. I just wanted clarity on that.
Yeah, no, that's a really important question.
And uh, so we have time, once the bid process um, evolves through the protocol, goes through the parameters that are the state has, then we can make a decision if, you know, if the numbers are wacky to us or if they fall in line or maybe less, you know, then we can go ahead and approve it and get get things happening, correct?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so so really what you're going to be, and this isn't the action, this is still the county manager reports. So that'll come up and Beata's got some more on the on the CIP. But really what you're voting on on that on that capital improvement plan is to let staff know that you should plan on these things happening. Right? So as staff are creating their budgets for next year, they can assume that that's happening. So take facilities, for instance, we're probably, they probably aren't going to budget as much to replace the system or to, you know, fix components inside of that system that's going to be replaced next year. So that's kind of informing that you're not actually making the vote to do the 9.5 million until November. And then even after that point, there's still the the purchasing process of which we'll, that'll pretty much be through the facilities committee that most of that happens. It won't come back to this whole board other than we can provide reports.
So this is essentially voting to provide the staff with guidance and to devoting the staff time necessary to get us to the point where we start to have much more concrete numbers. Okay, that looks like it. Okay, reports of department departments. Um, no, that night. Yep, um, sorry. So we already did extension. Uh, next up is environmental services.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Chase Cummings with the Dunn County Land and Water Conservation Division. It's a division of the Environmental Services Department, which uh, my colleagues and I are here to present the annual report for 2024. Um, as you may know, um, the Environmental Services Department is a comprised of three separate divisions. The Land and Water Conservation Division, Planning and Land Use Division, and the Survey Division. So myself is the manager of the Land and Water Conservation Division. Um, I'll be presenting on that tonight. And then Tammy Traxler with Planning and Land Use and Tom Carlson with Survey will also follow up. So some of the programs that we administer, um, specifically in the Land and Water Conservation Division consist of a number of different things, but sometimes we get into wildlife damage. And in this case in 2024, um, we potentially could have had a claim for the wildlife damage abatement claims program due to squirrels damaging our fleet vehicles. All jokes aside, we managed it and we moved on. But um, the point of this slide is to to show that um, we do support um, relationship building within our our broader department. Um, we try to participate in as many county activities as we can. And uh, we also try to enjoy our work. So um, sometimes we need some morale boosters based on the type of work that we do. Uh, specifically for the Land and Water Conservation Division, um, we consist of the staff. So um, there's eight of us in our division. Heather Wood, Janelle Newcomb, Tina Barone, Bob Kainer, Rick Ingley, Travis Drier, and Amanda Hanson. Two other individuals on there, one's me and then one is Caden Erickson. He is a summer intern that we have. Um, he doesn't come every year, but he came last year for 24. And then we have a new one every year. That internship is fully funded by Dunn County Alliance of Conservation and Sports Clubs. Here's a list, uh, not all inclusive, but fairly inclusive of the programs that we administer through the Land and Water Conservation Division. Tonight I want to focus on uh, one one particular aspect of that. But just to back up a bit, there are a number of guiding documents that uh, you as elected officials as well as other entities help guide our work, specifically land and water conservation work. Um, and that might particularly is our land and water conservation plan. Uh, we also have watershed plans that are particularly to the Red Cedar Watershed, one being developed for the Galley River Watershed. Uh, we have the groundwater ad hoc committee recommendations. And then we have an ordinance, cup two ordinances, one non metallic mining reclamation ordinance. And then the other ordinances are ag performance standards and mineral storage and management ordinance, which I want to spend a little bit of time on here quick tonight. So our ag performance standards uh, is an ordinance that the county board adopted in July of 2021. It was an amendment to an existing ordinance that had been on the books since around the year 2000. This particular amendment brought into this code, county code, state administrative code known as ag performance standards and prohibitions. Those rules have been around since um, October of 2002. And we have uh, to this point, been the, I guess, administrative arm or on the boots on the ground arm of the state for implementing those programs. We do receive funding in return, some funding in return for implementation of that. Uh, but it's also now part of our our code uh, to to work on those things. So what what are the um, ag performance standards and prohibitions? It's primarily working with land users in the rural parts of the of the community of the county. Uh, typically it's with farmers. And that's looking at our soil and water resources, managing them in a way that we are preventing soil erosion, reducing the risk of soil erosion, managing our nutrients that we apply to cropland or pasture land to follow a nutrient management plan. Uh, working with um, mineral generators or livestock operations to be ensure that our handling of our uh, livestock minerals handled in a way that's um, uh, conducive to supporting crop growth productivity, but also making sure that it's not in the places that we don't want it to be. Uh, I mentioned uh, October of 2002 as a key date in the implementation of this program. Uh, anything uh, of existence prior to that date is considered a considered an existing farm or an existing land use. And therefore. And therefore, any updates or changes or implementation of best management practices, there must be a bona fide offer of cost share. So as you can imagine, the majority of the land that we work with, majority of the the facilities that we work with towards implementing these programs were in existence as of 2002. So we're obligated to provide a cost share funding to implement any practices that we have. There are a few exceptions. So if you're considered a new facility, so maybe you had an expansion of a farm, bought brought new land into crop production, anything after 2002, there's not a requirement to be offered cost share. Another exception would be participation in the farmland preservation program. That is a state program that receives tax, income tax credits for property enrolled in preserving farmland. And part of that is you need to meet these ag performance standards. And then the others could be related to permitting or licensing that would require a permit. Last slide for me here is specifically to talk about the cost share component of it. Later on your agenda tonight, there's a budget adjustment request related to my division for a notice of discharge grant. That's for a particular project, and I can speak on that later if you if you'd like. But this one in in 2024 that I'm going to talk about now is a project that was in the works for a number of years. It was to address some mismanagement and some issues with an existing mineral storage facility that was overtopping, potentially leaking the groundwater. And through this process, because it was in existence prior to 2002, an offer of cost share is required to be made in order to improve that system. The landowner was very cooperative, but we submitted a notice of discharge grant. And in 2002, or excuse me, 2022, when this grant application was applied for, the state had roughly about $1 million available statewide for implementation of notice of discharge grants. We received that award of $796,150. That went to one farm to bring their mineral storage facility up to code and comply with the ag performance standards and prohibitions. That is not a lighthearted decision that we make. We take that very seriously. These are people's livelihood that we're dealing with. And we pride ourselves on building relationships to move the needle a little bit further in maintaining our our land as productive as possible, but also protecting the water resource and the soil resources. I'd be happy to answer more questions on that. But as we talk about some of the impacts of surface water and groundwater, particularly surface water, you hear a lot about talking about phosphorus and the phosphorus implications. And a lot of these grants, we're looking to try to reduce that phosphorus discharge. And you can see on here, this project alone, we were able to reduce just over 2,000 pounds a year by upgrading this facility. The landowner is is happy with the facility, is creating a better use of their time and resources. So with that, thank you for my portion of this. And we are working on our land and water plan as an update. And I'd be happy to take any questions regarding the land and water division after my colleagues finish their report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Carlson. I am the county surveyor for Dunn County, and I'm the director of the Survey Division of ENS. I have two employees that I work with, Greg Botzer, who is a professional land surveyor, and Troy Stoll, who is a survey technician. On the screen in front of you, I have the major duties that my office undertakes throughout the course of the year. Due to time constraints, I obviously can't go through all of those. So I'm going to focus on the last one, which is remonumentation and maintenance of the US Public Land Survey System corners. So tonight, I thought it would be best to just focus on a square mile of land within Dunn County. I think everybody can understand or has a perception of what a square mile of land is. So to start, I have a diagram on the left. Everybody should recognize that. That's Dunn County. There's roughly 864 square miles, a lot of real estate in Dunn County. You can see all the squares there, right? There's 24 of those. Those are considered or called survey or congressional townships. Each one of those squares represents 36 square miles. They are designated by town and range. So if you look at Town of New Haven in the upper left hand corner, it's Town 31 North, Range 14 West. So those are our 24 congressional townships. They were created and laid out by the US federal government between 1847 and 1853. So a long time ago. Then we also have civil townships, 22 of those. And you're probably more familiar with a civil township, Town of Red Cedar, Town of Elk Mound, O'Gally, Lucas. Civil townships, of course, are identified by name, commonly correspond to one of the to a full congressional township, but not always. Sometimes they're smaller than a congressional township or can be larger. Town of Springbrook is a really good example. It's parts of four congressional townships. So then, so again, we're going to drill down to one square mile. So we start with the county. If we pull out one of those congressional townships in the in the bottom row down there, Town 26 North, Range 13 West, I have that on the right hand side of the the diagram here. So there are 36 square miles in there. There's 36 different sections. They're numbered 1 through 36. I'm not sure. Hopefully, everybody can see the the numbering on there. But if we look at the lower left square, that's Section 31, that represents one square mile in Town 26 North, Range 13 West. So let's break that out. The diagram on the left is our current parcel mapping as of today. You can see there's a lot of different parcels in that one square mile. We have some roads in there. This is actually down in the town of O'Gally, just south of Lake O'Gally. So you can see there's a lot happening there today. But we also have parcel mapping from 1849, which is the diagram on the right. That plat was produced by the government land office at the time the original survey went through. So on the left, we have a lot of different owners. On the right, we have one owner, and that was the federal government at the time, before they disposed of the land through land patents. So you can see the O'Gally Mill was there on that diagram. There was an old road running through there, excuse me, an old road running through there, as well as the O'Gally River. So now, if we take a really hard look at Section 31 as it sits today, I want you to focus on the that colored Xs on here. So from 1848 and 1849, wood posts were set at each point marked with an X, okay? And those posts were to control the boundary of all lands within this one square mile. So again, we're dealing with one square mile out of 864 in Dunn County. So wood posts at all those Xs. Today, 177 years later, monuments exist at all these eight corner locations. They're not wood posts anymore. We have a variety of different monuments. But the fact that fact still remains that the boundaries of the parcels of land in there, which there's 134 today, are all controlled by those eight corners in some fashion. So we have a lot of different documents out there. Of course, recorded deeds, we have subdivision plats, we have a condominium plat recorded in there. We have certified survey maps, a variety of different miscellaneous survey maps. All of those maps and deeds are tied to one or more of these red or orange Xs, I'm sorry. So just think about that. These wood posts that were put in in 1848 and 1849, those positions are still controlling the all the parcels in that section and across the county for that matter. So a major duty of my office is to monument the location where each original wood post was set, based on the best evidence we have today. We don't find those wood posts today, but we have other evidence. And people would think, well, once once a corner is monumented, our work is done. It's not. We have to maintain those monuments. Probably the three, three items we fight with the most, and I don't want to use the word fight, but the the three things we deal with the most are road construction, farming, and logging, right? Those three types of activities are the activities that are most likely to remove, destroy, or disturb a survey marker. So we're constantly having to make sure we have monuments in the ground. Surveyors survey from monuments. They don't survey from coordinates or from a GIS website or ONIX. A lot of landowners think they can survey that way, but the reality is you need monuments to survey from, physical points in the ground to measure from. So it's a constant job of putting these monuments in and maintaining them, making sure they're available. If a private landowner hires a surveyor to come out and some of these monuments are missing, they have to reestablish those those corner positions to pass that cost on to their clients. So it's very important work that we do. And it's something that we spend a lot of lot of time doing. So so again, I just want to, hopefully, you can walk away with a greater understanding of of the work that we do. This is one small area. There's 863 more of these squares that have the same eight corners around. Obviously, some of these are common to to multiple sections. But I think you understand the perspective of how many corners we have in the county. It's roughly 2,800 of these positions. So and then my last slide just talks about the importance of of preserving and maintaining these positions. And if in your travels, you ever see a please protect nearby survey marker, and then there's a marker in danger, either because of road construction, utility company, or something, please give my office a call so we can arrange to go out and and make sure it gets properly protected. So that is the end of my presentation, and I will turn it over to Tammy.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. For those who I haven't had a chance to meet, I'm Tammy Traxler, the current zoning administrator and county planner for Dunn County. I've been here for two years and recently took the position earlier this year. And I'm thankful to be here tonight to present the 2024 report on behalf of our team that has been dedicated throughout our change and transition through 2024 and 2025. Some big wins for us this year included, in 2024, included the adoption of new zoning standards for the accessory dwelling units, launching a housing toolkit, preparing for a new permit software system, and beginning groundwork for with West Central Regional Planning for a comprehensive plan and farmland preservation update. I'm proud to work alongside a great team, Lily Glodowski, Michelle, excuse me, Helichka, and Tracy Albrightson. Then I just capture what we do in our four major buckets. So zoning, really, there's no two days that are the same. We're problem solvers, researchers, historians, mediators, and sometimes therapists. We juggle walk-ins, complicated phone calls, scary files, and big decisions. For code enforcement, we approach violations with empathy and focus on solutions. In sanitation, we work closely with pump plumbers, soil testers, designers, contractors, homeowners, to ensure private onsite wastewater treatment systems are properly installed and maintained so they stay safe, effective, and don't turn into backyard science experiments. And finally, planning. Planning isn't just policy. It is, it's about people. Where land use, where our land use decisions shape our lived experiences, our sense of belonging. Zoning often feels like the same story. Some get permits, some don't. Some get a violation letter, and others get a peace of mind knowing they did it right. Earlier today, the board made appointments or accepted the appointments of our Board of Adjustment. And I just would like to offer a sincere thank you to those Board of Adjustment members who dedicate time to hear some of the most difficult land use decisions our county faces. From conditional use permits to variances, their thoughtful service is what keeps our land use decisions fair, balanced, and grounded in our public interest. Enough about 2024. I just want to kind of do a sneak peek to 2025, simply because we did launch our comprehensive plan project. It's about an 18 month project. And we respect the decisions that have led us to our current land use policies, but we also can't stay still. Planning is about preparing our communities to evolve with intention. This planning effort is not all about maps or zoning districts. It's about identity and a sense of place. For this slide, what is the sense of place? It's that smell of fresh cut hay in July, the sound of laughter at the Maple Tamer Theater on a Friday night, the taste of fresh strawberry pie made from berries you picked locally, the sight of golden hills lit by a setting sun, and the feel of the soil in your hands when working with the land you love. When zoning allows a grow picked strawberry farm to exist, when our ordinances protect cultural landmarks like the Tamer, like Maple Tamer, when we plan for small things that add up to a full life, we're not just managing land, we're helping communities thrive. So I ask this board to challenge me. Challenge our team to write a plan that reflects the values of Dunn County. Challenge us to listen deeply, reflect honestly, and plan boldly. Because land use isn't about land, it's about the people. And people thrive in places that feel like home. So thank you, and please don't hesitate to reach out. You know, whether it's sanitation, zoning, planning, or code enforcement, we're welcome to to talk through any topics or issues with you. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Story, I believe you had one for Chase.
I do. I had promised a gentleman last spring that I encountered that when I had an opportunity, I was going to bring this up. Because he had asked me when I first started the board, what was an issue that I had dealt with, that I had voted for. And I told him I had voted for the first ethanol plant that we had in Dunn County. And he was upset about that because he thought it was actually causing problems for the groundwater and for that area, and he was a farmer in the area. So I guess this is my opportunity to bring that up to you and ask what you can tell me about whether there's any issues with the ethanol plant and or if it is time maybe for it to be evaluated to make sure that it is, I mean, still not affecting the groundwater in the area.
Sure, I I don't know that I have an answer for you. I'm not aware of any direct issues with the ethanol plant to groundwater. Certainly, we have done groundwater monitoring throughout the county. It's very difficult to pinpoint the sources of potentially nitrate or any other contaminants because of the the way we use our land. Our monitoring program does have a goal to help better understand that, but also to help landowners understand their water and what they're drinking and consuming. So I don't necessarily have a specific answer to whether the ethanol plant is good or bad, I guess, from a water quality standpoint. But I'd be happy to look into that. And if you would like to follow up with me, I can.
I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Hagan.
Thank you. This goes for Ms. Traxler. For the comprehensive planning, I'm really excited about that. For my term on the board, this is my second term, I've attended a bunch of conferences and whatnot, a lot of panels that focused on housing and how to help people in their certain counties. And a lot of grants and monies are tied to having a comprehensive plan. And I have listened to other counties ask questions about, how do we make a comprehensive plan or whatnot? And I've been impressed with Dunn County having almost like clockwork, a comprehensive plan and keeping that up to date. So for having this going, it'll free up those monies and those grants for us to use to help our communities. So I just really want to highlight that.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. We need the plan to get the money, and it makes us more competitive, for sure.
That looks like it. Thank you so much. Okay, Health Department.
Nobody let me leave without my computer. Yeah, awesome. So my name is KT Gallagher, and I'm the Dunn County Health Department Director. I've been in my role about seven years. For so for some of you, you've seen this kind of intro to the position or to the presentation. But I still think it's beneficial, especially for folks that haven't been here for a while. So I need a show of hands. Who's used the Health Department in the last year? Oh, you guys are awesome. I so appreciate you. Okay, so we're going to go through a couple of things, and then I'm going to show you how all of you have used the Health Department in the last year. All right, so has anybody used us to do a radon test in your home? We are the Regional Radon Information Center. And so that is a variety of counties where you submit your radon tests, and then they come to us to follow up if you have an exceedance in that amount that's safe. And we'll walk through ways to make that safer for you and your family. Have you welcomed a new baby into the house? Maybe a grandbaby looking at some of the hair or lack of hair. So if you have a new baby, we follow up with all families that have the welcome babies into the household. We talk about safe drinking water. And so if they're on a private well, we'll oftentimes get them. And so if they're on a private well, we'll oftentimes get them free testing for that water. We can also connect them with their own nurse to do some after postpartum care and follow up. And then, of course, we'll have conversations about meeting the family where it's at for vaccinations as well. Again, TB skin tests. So tuberculosis, if you are working in a long-term care facility or as a carer, we will ask, or oftentimes the administration will ask that you have proof that you do not have tuberculosis. We perform that at the Health Department. It's a two-test, two-step test. And we see a lot of the county that way. No show of hands, but we're going to talk about this today. If you have been diagnosed with one of the very many number of reportable diseases, you will get a very friendly phone call from one of our nurses talking through where you may have been exposed to it, how you can protect your family, how you can protect your loved ones so that there isn't transmission. And this is where I have you. So the Dunn County Health Department in our environmental health program, you guys heard from me last year on that program, inspects all of our licensed facilities, including restaurants. And for giggles, if you have your phone and feel open to showing off your tech skills, you can take a picture of this QR code. It will take you to the list of all of our inspections. If you want to see how your favorite dive does or your favorite, I shouldn't say that, mom and pop restaurant or chain's restaurant, you can find that on the website, just like all of the rest of the state licensed facilities. So you have all used the Dunn County Health Department in the last year. And I do appreciate you guys humoring me and looking up those inspections. I'm going to give you just like three more seconds. You're awesome. All right, so these are the foundational public health services in both foundational areas and foundational capabilities. When we know that we have a high-functioning Health Department, these are the things that they do. I could talk about all of these, I'd be happy to. But we have been given a very short amount of time to give you just a very short synopsis of one program that we do. So what are we going to talk about today? I'm excited. I can get real nerdy about this. We're going to talk about communicable disease control and access to care with our program that does surveillance and assessment of communicable diseases. So our WEDS follow-up, our Wisconsin Electronic Disease Surveillance System, is something that about two and a half of our wonderful nurses do full-time. We get a whopping $4,500 from the state. That's GPR funding, and we have no other funding. The rest is from levy. So thank you very much. So why do we do this thing that's expensive? Because we have to. So we have a couple statutory requirements that make it so that the Health Department is required to follow up this, on this. If you look at DAS, DHS Administrative Statutes 140, it is the responsibility of a local Health Department to follow up on communicable diseases. And this is from the reg. I'm not going to read it to you. And then we also have a separate statutory requirement to make sure that we're using that reports of communicable diseases. So we heard time and time again, when we called to say, hey, so I heard you might have tested positive for something. They're like, how do you know that? That's just something that my doctor knows. Well, your doctor is required to report it to the Health Department using the Wisconsin Electronic Disease Surveillance System or WEDS. So it is a specific clause in HIPAA that they are required to provide that information to local public health so that we can do a couple different things with that data. Not only is it your doctor, it's your nurse and any other licensed practitioner. And then separately, even if your doctor or nurse dropped the ball for whatever reason, they didn't get their, they didn't make a phone call, the lab is also required to do it. So it's doubly required in statute to be provided to the Health Department. All right, so another QR code. These are all the diseases that are required to be reported. It is about three pages long. And most of them are things you've probably never heard of. There are things that are foodborne, vectorborne, and then transmitted, transmitted person to person. But depending on where this is, an appendix A, there is at minimum something that comes through WEDS, but oftentimes there's also a phone call. So if it's something that is preventable with vaccines, if it is something that we need to step in quickly to do prevention and make sure that we don't have a larger outbreak, that's a phone call. Other comes through WEDS. So you now know that we have to do this. We don't get much money for it, but we have to do it. But why should we do it? So we prevent spread. So there are a lot of things that can be spread person to person, and we can step up and inform folks how that can be prevented. So if you don't finish your course of antibiotics for your STI, you could infect your partner. Guess what? Your partner can reinfect you. It never ends. So we're preventing transmission. You guys know, you know. We can control outbreaks. So if we have an outbreak of E. coli or crypto or cyclo, we can step in and we can look at what are the commonalities in this situation? And how do we prevent this? This goes way back to John Snow and cholera. Father of epidemiology, studying of disease in a population. He found, and you guys may remember this, that we had a waterborne cholera outbreak way back when in England. And by removing the pump handle because the water was contaminated, he was able to prevent additional spread of illness. We don't have pump handles typically that everybody gets their water from, thank goodness. But we do have common sources for illness. And by having this conversation with our very friendly nurses, we can pinpoint those areas of commonality, and we can prevent and control an outbreak. Happens in restaurants, it happens in water systems, it happens in backyard barbecues. Connection to care. A lot of the things that we do are very complicated as far as medical care. I don't know. One of my least favorite parts of adulting is navigating the healthcare system, right? And so when you have something like tuberculosis or hepatitis A, these systems are difficult to navigate. Our nurses help with that. We make sure that you did get your antibiotic and you did take it. And your partner knows that they need to go get tested. We make sure that you got that chest X-ray and that we have a test of cure. These are things that our nurses do. Confirmation of treatment. I already talked about that one. And navigating complex systems. So you guys will have seen this very small grid on page three of the 11-page department report. My apologies. So the reason I have my computer is because I had a fight with the printer and I lost. I had 11 blank pages. So if you have questions about either page three or any other page in the report, I'll pull up my computer. But local examples. What does it mean here in Dunn County? Can you try? Okay. Vectorborne diseases. Vector meaning we have insects that move diseases to people. So typically in Dunn County, we see a lot of Lyme disease. And then we also have other mosquito borne, Lyme disease is tick borne. And then we have other mosquito borne illnesses. Thankfully, some of the big, bad, nasty ones like malaria dengue, yellow fever, they don't typically happen here. One of the wonderful perks of our winter weather is that we don't have those mosquitoes. However, we still have those diseases come in because it's just a plain ride away. And we need to do the investigation to make sure that it was acquired through travel and not necessarily locally acquired. Respiratory illnesses. So we have typically one active TB case a year, give or take. And we have many latent TB tests. So that can look like a lot of things. So actual case in the last 10 years, we had an individual, they went on an exchange abroad, came back and graduated, got into healthcare. They came into the Health Department to get that little TB skin test that we talked about. They tested positive. They had picked up latent TB during their exchange. So we walk through that process with them. It's very complex. It's direct observed therapy, meaning we have to watch you take your pill for four to six months, every week. Because if we don't, then we have active TB and people could die. That's really the whole thing, people could die. And then here in Dunn County, you can see in our numbers, we have a lot of STIs. That is not just college students, folks. However, we have a lot of STIs. I'm not going to finish that thought. You don't need to hear it. And so in Dunn County, a couple of years ago, we had a really significant increase in gonorrhea. It's an STI. Both men and women can get it. And what we found is that our providers weren't testing for both chlamydia and gonorrhea per the best practice. And so we did some outreach to our local clinics. We did better testing, and we've had reduction in cases. So that's something that we've done here. We were also one of the first MPOCs cases in the region in 2022, I think it was. It all runs together. And so really making sure, especially in close-knit communities where STIs are more prevalent, that we get out and we do that outreach. And with that case with MPOCs, with vaccination for folks that want it. And then foodborne illnesses. What you eat can make you sick. You can have bacteria or pathogens in the water that's used to prepare your food or on the hands of the people that make your food or in the food as it's prepared. And so we do follow up on that. So you guys may have remembered that in 2018, we had a cyclospora outbreak associated with Del Monte veggie trays and QuickTrip. We had a case here. We did the case investigation. And a couple weeks later, state said, we think we have a place where people were exposed. Can you go back and ask this client what they actually ate from that veggie tray? We did, and we helped inform CDC and the state on what was actually making people sick. E. coli, I think everybody's heard about E. coli. And we see obviously over the summer as people are barbecuing out in the backyard. One of the takeaways is if you take your burgers out on a plate, go get a clean plate before you take them off the grill, right? You all know that. Some people don't. So we do have E. coli outbreaks and/or cases every summer. And we work to make sure that that's not passed with from within the family as well. So that overview is of our WEDS program, our Disease Control and Prevention Program. It is one of three divisions and one program of many that our nursing program, our nursing division does. But hopefully that gives you a quick glimpse as to what the Health Department does. Any questions? Wonderful.
Okay, you've got your computer. Great. I can cross that off my little list here. All right. Item 10, Consideration of Reports, Resolutions, and Ordinances to the County Board from the Executive Committee. Item A, Resolution Adopting the 2026 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan. I'll need a motion in a second, and then we'll go. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Quinn, seconds. All right. You have the information before you, but we're going to have, I know we'll have some clarifying questions. So come on up, Biada.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I have a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to show here in just a few minutes. So in CIP, I think Dan did an amazing job explaining some of the additions and revisions we were going back and forth in our CIP. So we've removed some and added some. So what you see here is on the CIP for 2026 is Sheriff, there is the facilities, and there's information technology. So as you recall, we, in March of 2025, we presented a policy around capital improvement plan. So in that policy, we set some parameters as to what qualifies an item for CIP. So we want it to be more structured and so that we can consistently use that. So part of this policy, again, is to identify some of those criteria such as dollar threshold. So when we see here on the CIP document, those are identified as per the policy items that the department is asking for, that they have no other means of to pay for it. So even though it falls, it's not that $100,000 like you look at facilities per the policy, but it also meets that criteria that it has no additional funding. Then you'll see one-time items. So one-time, this is again very similar, is they don't have any other means of making that purchase, which is the John Deere. Because in the policy, it states, you know, CIP is going to be item that is in addition to the building, constructing a building, not necessarily purchasing lawnmower, but they have no other funding for that. And also we added information technology that again is a project that there is no funding for. And then there's the sheriff's squat cars, that kind of falls under that criteria per that policy. So in that proposed CIP, you see that it's $10 million to $85. And the proposed funding source for that is to issue debt of $9.5 million to support the HVAC geothermal. And the $785,000, which is for the squat cars and the other items on the four facility and IT, is to use general fund balance. I also did, provided you a handouts. And on the second page, it kind of outlines when those projects fall, especially some of those big-ticket items. It's not to say that one is any of a less important than other. But high-ticket items, obviously, here we have is the geothermal. And then for facilities, and then there's the highway. So as Dan mentioned in his presentation, there was some movement as far as when highway was looking to make that project. And of course, next year for 2026 is the geothermal, which kind of takes me to the next presentation, which is the PowerPoint. So here, we're going to skip over to the policy. We're going to go to slide four. Do I have the switcher? Switcher guru? Okay, got it. So this is what our debt looks like. So we have not received our 2024 audit. It's coming here soon. So what I started with is our 2023 ending. And incorporated, that's my little window here, my math, is to what debt we've issued post the 23 audit and some of the payments we've already made. So once the audit reports are released, I would expect to see that for year end of '24. Next slide, this is just activities, what we currently have borrowed for. And what is that remaining debt once we made all the payments in '24? This again, the next one is just a visual to see if we were not to borrow anything else, that's what it would look like. We've also are in the process of doing our annual budget. So as you look at the CIP items, one thing I want to bring to surface is items to consider in our upcoming budget, which are is items to consider in our upcoming budget, which are wages. There might be changes in benefits. There's a lot of, that's still unknown, decisions that need to happen. And then there's always the highway. So CIP does not put their county projects on the CIP. So that's going to be in their annual budget. And it's estimated to be around that $6.8 million. And then you're expecting really minimal increase in the operating. So this is where we are at with our current fund balance. And as you recall, we have a Dunn County ordinance 42 that kind of gives us the, sets the guidance around our fund balance being not less than that 35, stay within that 50%. So right now we are at 53, just shy over. And this is pre-audit. So that number might change once we get 2024. So this is what I gathered off our 23 year end audit report. Here's what I gave you as a handout for the CIP. So the next slide, I want to kind of dip a little bit into the debt with the upcoming projects. So we reached out to PMA to help us structure a debt to identify an opportunity to again build the geothermal or HVAC. And when would be the best time to issue debt for the highway facility and renovation? With the ceiling of again, being at that $5.3 million in debt service capacity. So we, there was a lot of conversations that this is our goal, to stay at that. That would not then increase what we currently have as debt service. So with that in mind, they said geothermal, of course, would be at that in '26, at that 9.5 million. And then where does the highway fit? When would be the best time to issue debt for the highway? Staying within that threshold of 5.3? So again, for the geothermal, taking a debt of 9.5 million. So again, the debt was structured. It's estimated. One thing to keep in mind that once a decision, once you're closer to making the decision, is it going to be geothermal because of that rebate? And if that rebate is available, our consultants can go and restructure the debt to account for when would be, when the money would, when the cash or the rebate would come in and how that would fit in the, in the structure. But for this purpose, it's just taking that 9.5 million. And then our debt, if we were to borrow, would start in March of 2027. So and again, it's kind of built in that it will be borrowed later in the year, not at the beginning of the year. And that again is estimated based on 4.5% interest as the market is now. But then also keep in mind that we still have that $3 million every year to support highway construction projects. So that's already incorporated into this equation. So borrowing $3 million for highway projects, taking on $9.5 million for geothermal and our existing debt, that we would be within that 5.3, just shy under from 2026 to 2031. So this is when the opportunity arises to then assess and say, well, where does the highway projects fit? So given what the highway committee suggested that they will go with the facility construction in 2028. So here it says we would borrow this money. If we borrow this money in 2028 and then the renovation would follow in 2030. So that means that our debt would be at that above 5.3. It would get us to 5.8 to 5.9 million of debt service, that ceiling, and that will stay until 2050. So that really translates to an increase approximately between half a million to 600,000. You know, keep in mind that there's that rebate because it's, as Dan alluded, it's very unknown depending on what's going to happen with the federal side if that rebate is going to be available to us. So best case scenario, if it is available, that could translate to help us meet that overage because we would build it into our repayment schedule. And there's a lot of decisions that, analysis that will need to happen and says, you know, how are we going to use that rebate? And that's all I have. The last page is, is what has transpired over time. There was some, a lot of back and forth and a lot of revisions and recalculations with all these different scenarios when that would be borrowed. So on April, early 16, as you remember, there was this workshop. May 30th, facility made a recommendation to go with the geothermal. Then on June 11th, executive committee kind of sat down and then formulated their recommendation on the CIP and its funding. And here we are today seeking your adoption of the 2026 to 2030 CIP. Any questions for me? I am pressing buttons here on this tablet because I'm like touching. It's touched. Okay. Any questions for me?
It looks like people need some time to digest, so.
That's understandable.
We might need to call you back, but I think you're off the hook for the moment.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to frame this a little bit. This is a policy vote. It's not a vote to spend this money. This is a vote to say, these are the things we think we need to do and this is what it will probably cost. And it's a very conservative version. So this, this is not a, you know, we don't have to do a roll call. We can, if people would like. This is not a, one of those two thirds votes. It's, this is us doing our broad kind of policy thinking rather than we are going to spend this money at this time. That I thought would be useful to you. So you have the matter before you. I have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any other clarifying questions? All right. So any speaking to the resolution, first ask? Any speaking to the resolution, second ask? Apparently we are ready to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. 2025 budget amendment, environmental services, health, and DHS. You have the numbers in front of you. You're all pretty familiar with how these things work. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Hagan, seconds. Any clarifying questions? All right. Any speaking to the motion going once? Any speaking to the motion going twice? Again, we are apparently ready to vote. This one is a roll call. And I believe Andrew is setting you up to vote on your box.
So if you are present, please tap the screen on your speaker in lieu of that. Do we still have, is Supervisor Wilsey with us? Does not look like, it feels like a seance. It does not look like Supervisor Wilsey is with us. What about Supervisor Burnt? Does not look like Supervisor Burnt is with us. Well, what about Supervisor Gilbert? How would you like to vote?
I'll vote for it.
Supervisor Gilbert votes yes. Would the esteemed staff member assigned to Supervisor Gilbert? Okay, perfect. And we are just waiting on two additional votes.
No, we're good. Motion passes.
Thank you.
10C, ordinance amendment, chapter two, rules of the board, first reading. You have the matter before you. I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse, Supervisor Steen. That's all we do on this tonight. This is to give you a full month to look at this. Make sure you're comfortable with it. We can't ask, we can't answer questions if you have them now. I expect we'll get a lot more of them at the next meeting. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Let me, um, there we go.
Yeah, I've got a question and I got a headache reading about it today.
You're not alone.
Is this, are there changes from previous ones? And are they highlighted what the changes may be?
Uh, so this is very similar to the informational packet that we sent out not long ago. There are quite a number of changes from the older version of the rules, which we would be repealing and replacing, replacing this with, where we have found things in our rules that we find work really well, that do not agree with WCA's recommended ideal rules. We are going with ours. There are places where we didn't have a rule, where we needed a rule. There are places where our rules were not entirely in compliance with statute. So there's lots.
Well, I come across one and I'd like to ask corporate counsel about it to comment on it. And that's section three, county board officers, 3.03 chairs and vice chairs committee. And my question has to do with, as he reads that, what is the responsibility of the vice chair if the chair vacates the office?
Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but the responsibility of the vice chair is to serve in the chair's stead until either a chair has been appointed or the vice chair is moved up to chair. It is not an automatic, not an automatic jump up. So if I keel over dead tomorrow, Gary Steen will be in this chair, but only until you, only until you either elect him to replace me as chair or elect a new chair.
But that isn't what it says. It says the vice chair of a committee shall assume all duties and responsibilities of the chair of the committee in the event of the chair's incapacitation or inability to serve and shall also perform any additional duties as outlined in those rules. It doesn't comment. I mean, that's why I'm asking the legal end. But it doesn't, you know, I understand how after the general election, county board chairman, you know, appoints the committees and appoints the chairs. But what's in it for anybody to be a vice chair if you don't have a chance to move to chair? Even if, I mean, I think just in judicial, it just happened that Wilsey moved up as chair. And, you know, so, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to, what, is there a legal, I don't know. How do you read it?
My reading of it is, I agree with Kelly that it, on a temporary basis, realize that sometimes it becomes, as Kelly described, it could be a very sudden event. That person fills in for the chair until a new chair is elected. It says they assume the duties, but they don't, they do not assume the office of chair.
Because we have had a number of board members who have passed on. And in continuity of committees, I would think that you would want to, to give a little respect to your vice chairs that they may continue. You don't have to have the same opinion because, you know, all the committees, you know, make a vote. But I mean, you know, it's, it's no secret that, you know, you're a more informed board member if you attend an executive committee. And if the only way that you can get to executive committee is through the county board chairman, that just doesn't seem fair to me. So that's, okay. It doesn't say anything about the, you know, being appointed by the chair. And I'm, and I'm not hammering on you, Kelly. I just.
No, I, 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 I understand your, your questioning, your concern. And that, so the two things that we have adjusted in terms of chairs and vice chairs are essentially, actually, we haven't, we've just adjusted the one, which is what exactly happens with a vice chair to assume duties and under what circumstances? So it used to be that if the vice chair, if the chair was not able to attend a meeting, the vice chair would then step in. But with the opportunity for remote and things that a chair might do, you know, like there's a whole lot of stuff I have to sign. And with electronic signing, I can now do many of those things when I am not actually in the county. So that's why it's gone to incapacity rather than not being in the space. So it is, in essence, it is exactly what has been the practice for the last 40 years with the slight increase in the ability to, of the chair to do things when they are not in, not physically present. That's really the only change we've made.
I'll just close in that. I got a very nice comment and thank you from Ann when she was out of the country and I brought it one time. And it felt really good to be appreciated. Thank you, Ann.
All right. Any other speaking? Supervisor Story.
Well, this is a what if. Given there's the potential to lose some Medicaid funding, some Meals on Wheels funding, some, well, other things in human services funding. If we were to agree to this now, I'm not sure what, when this would be voted on.
Next, next meeting.
If this were to happen, would there be some discussion that could happen for those of us that may want to forego per diems so that that money could go towards some of those programs that we're going to lose if they're not able to be funded?
I believe that that would not be something you would need to run through the rules. Anyone who wants to take a per diem and sign it over to a program, there's, there's absolutely nothing preventing you from that. So I don't think that that would be something that would be needed to be addressed by the rules.
Well, I can tell you that at my last ADRC meeting, there were some that came up to me and said, given that we were just an advisory committee, that they didn't feel comfortable taking per diems. And those were the people that, you know, are not on the board. So I just wondered if there might need to be at some point, some discussion maybe on whether or not we want to do something where people can count on that money rather than us not knowing who's going to maybe sign it over or not. But just, just food for thought.
Yeah, I don't think that that is a, I don't think that that's probably appropriate for the ordinance part of the rules. But I will have a chat with Dan and Jim about that.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
So there is a timing related to anything per diem related that it couldn't take effect until the April 2026 meeting, which would be the first meeting of the new board. So after the election. So we can't change per diems until the next board takes over.
Yeah, and there's, there might be some flex in, we couldn't change anything in terms of rules for per diems. And we couldn't change amounts for per diems. But again, there is nothing in our current rule set that would prevent someone from taking the per diem and signing it over to the appropriate committee, although it would have to go into, it's messy, but I think it's doable. And I don't know that the rules, it would actually be much messier to try and do it with the rule set. Any further speaking?
Just to follow up on that.
Sure.
Given it wouldn't take effect until April, would there be a way that we could get access, and maybe I already have access and I don't realize it, to those numbers of some of those programs that we think might be affected? Or when we do find out when they're affected, what those dollar amounts would be? So we could find out just how much our per diems are part of our budget versus what we might be able to do to help our community?
There have been discussions, once we have a, a sense of what the federal budget actually looks like, we will absolutely be planning on updating the board on what we know. Once we actually. Once we actually know something real, I've had this conversation with Supervisor Vandermeulen, among others. And so we will, we will, we will be bringing that information back once we have it and have a reasonable way to present it.
Okay. In the meantime, I would just lift up that maybe for our next meeting and for some meetings thereafter, that maybe where there could be a food gathering for stepping stones that could be here, that we could let them know that we would be having some things that they could pick up or we could drop off for them? That that would be something that maybe we could do as a, as a group?
What I would say to that is it's not on the agenda. So we couldn't, certainly couldn't do that officially. But if people wanted to do that, say before or after the meeting or have a discussion about that, that would be something you're, you would be more than welcome. But that's, we are now getting far enough outside of my agenda that we, we really can't go there.
Thank you, Kelly.
I, I would like to accommodate you, but, uh, any further speaking to, oh, Dan.
Can I just add one comment? So as you say, any further speaking? So there will be a vote on this next time. And if there is any changes or amendments, they need to be in written form. So if you do have changes that you need made, you can certainly reach out to me. Or Chris is planning on being in next week, but Jim is going to do all the work. So find Jim. And he can create that amendment for you to offer up to the board next time. But if you have a change and you do not have it written according to our current rules and the proposed rules, we will not be able to act on it. So.
Yep. Thank you for the clarification, very important. All right. No more clarifying. We aren't speaking to this because we are not voting on it. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. D, Resolution Adopting Appendixes A, B, and C for Chapter 2 of Dunn County Ordinances. This is a resolution, so we would, we normally vote on this when it comes up. So what I would like is for someone to move that we postpone this until after the ordinance vote at the next meeting. I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bishand, Supervisor Wolf. Uh, any clarifying questions? Anyone want to speak to that? Great, we were voting to postpone the resolution until after the ordinance that it will be affected by, and we really can't vote on it first. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Item 10E, Resolution Appointing Daniel Dunbar. Dunbar is Dunbar. Sorry about that, Dan. As county manager, I'll give a brief framing on this. And, you know, if you have specific questions, we'll get Jenna up here to, to answer those that we're allowed to answer. We had a pool around 30, a little bit more. We had four people that we invited in for, we did a full national search. We had about four people we invite, we had four people we invited in, three of them showed up. Uh, we had built into the process the potential to have a second round of interviews if the first round was not particularly conclusive. Nobody really felt that the first, first round was anything but very conclusive. And so we, at the executive committee, is very excited to recommend that you all vote for Dan as our next county manager. Does anyone have any questions? Well, I need, I guess the motion in the second and then the, we'll go with Larry, Supervisor Larry Bjork and Supervisor Hedlund. I got like 12 hands that all came up at once. I think that's a good sign, Dan. All right, does it, any have, buddy have any clarifying questions about the process? If so, I will get Jenna up here because she knows right where the edges are on things that we can answer. Supervisor Hagan?
Yeah, thank you. I know when we first began this search, you elicited suggestions from the board as to what we would like to see in the next manager. I asked if the next county manager would be continuing the tradition of the YouTube videos and updates and stuff like that to kind of get the word out to the public. I was wondering if our candidate to be could speak to that?
I believe that is well within our remit. Go, go for it, Dan.
So yes. It didn't take much arm twisting to Chris to do that, but that was something that came from Krista, who, Krista Bind, who reported to me. And that was something that we really wanted to do as part of a communications plan. So I was in on the ground floor of that. And Chris is obviously a happy candidate to do that. I'm probably not as happy, but I know that it needs to be done. And it's important that it needs to be done. So yes, I will be continuing that as well as many more videos that we've started to churn out in the last couple of weeks.
Good to hear. I look forward to them.
Anybody else? All right. Any speaking to this one? Going once? Going twice? We are ready to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? There we go. I have to sign some paperwork for Jenna when we're done with the evening. All right. Congratulations, Dan, or condolences, one of the two.
Thank you.
Uh, Item 11, Consideration of Reports, Resolutions, and Ordinances Coming to the County Board From the Standing Committees? None. Always a pleasant surprise. Announcements, our next meeting will be July 30. Note that that's later than usual because we do not have an August meeting unless something comes up that forces us to have one. So just remember to, you know, what, you're one month later. That's all I've got. Supervisor Shackleton?
Just wanted to give a special thanks out to the Facilities Committee for having a special meeting to accommodate the racetrack with a special race on a couple of weeks ago on Wednesday night. I'm not really involved with it, but I was there. And there's an excellent turnout. There was, the stands were absolutely packed. My kid kind of helped out with part of it. And he said they were sold out of food before the races even started. I think they sold out a few times. They had to go to Tri-Mart, pick up more food. I guess they got really good feedback on, the drivers liked the track. We had two NASCAR drivers in town, and so it was a huge turnout. The businesses around, I know Culvers and QuickTrip were extremely busy, which was good to see, and a lot of the motels. So I just want to thank them for voting for that and allowing the track to have a special race. And just want to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Shackleton. Supervisor Larry Bjork?
I want to invite everybody to Dunn County Fair that'll come up just prior to our next meeting. And if you want to see what a lot of kids are doing with different projects, or if you got to see the memories on Sunday morning, it's a great show. If your ears need to be cleaned out, the tractor pull will do that. I don't need it myself, like, but it's, it's a wonder, it's a wonderful come-togetherness of the county. And I just would hope people would take a chance to take a stroll through there and see what's available. And if I was part of the Meat Animal Projects, I'd be all inviting you to come buy a high-quality animal to sale, so.
Unfortunately, you're not, because I think we would be pushing our, our luck on conflict of interest at a meeting. But thank you Supervisor Bjork, and I always appreciate your enthusiasm for the fair and reminding us all to show up. And with that, we are adjourned.